Yep, yep.
Okay. I call to order the City of Milton's Planning Commission for Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Will Commissioner Blockdy lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag
By
of the United States of America.
And to the Republic
For which it stands, one nation
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yay. Okay, roll columnist Claire.
Commissioner Blockdyke.
Here.
Commissioners Ligon.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Here.
Ice Chair Mercado.
Here.
Chair Hamel.
Here. Reordering of the agenda, none. Presentations, none. Approval of minutes from the regular planning commission of January 20th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comments, this is where members of the public can log in or call in for anything other than what's on the agenda and, oh, we don't have the screen correct because it's on the agenda.
Correct, yeah, so we'll, we can give some time, but we can continue to go through, I would think, go through the agenda and if somebody logs on and wants to make
Okay.
that's good with you.
Okay. Give me a wave if you see anyone. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. Okay, any, any caller enters?
Nope, not that I see.
Okay, other business information item. Review and comment on draft revisions to the community design guidelines, and I believe Planner Irma Tucker is presenting tonight.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hamel. I am going to draw my screen. I'm going to attempt to do this. I don't think I've done this from City Hall yet, so let me, um. Hey.
There we go, looks good.
So, do you see just the, the one shot of the community design line cover, or do you see my notes next to it?
No notes.
The cover.
I don't see the notes.
Perfect, okay, yay, thank you. Okay, thank you Chair Hamel and Commission members. So, before you tonight is the draft update of the community design guidelines. So, in response to City Council direction, staff has been working with the city's contract architect, Revot, Al Rickon Associates, Revot for short, to update the 2005 community design guidelines. The overall scope consisted of updating the section on the agrarian design style, which included reviewing the use of board and batten and providing alternatives for consideration. And this was the primary driver, well, one of the primary drivers for the update of the design guidelines. And the other one was to incorporate the art deco, art modern architectural style that was adopted to this specific plan in 2017. And along the way, we made some other cleanup changes to the document as applicable. So, the scope of work basically entailed for the architect, for Revot, to develop a template to resemble the existing format of the 2005 design guidelines. We didn't have like a working editable document, so they actually created sections that we could then, new sections that we can just insert into the existing design guidelines, and we published the entire booklet as an update. So, in addition to that, we needed to update the table of contents and the introduction to reflect the new and amended chapters and to reference the Avenue Flag specific plan. And as I mentioned, revise the agricultural, I'm sorry, the agrarian style architecture, which was chapter two, adding a new section for the art deco, art modern style. And we realized that the illustrations of before and after, there were some examples that were actually in the specific plan that were being illustrated as other design styles, so we had to make some adjustments to that. Okay, so the process that this went through is, because the City Council asked for this update, they also asked us to bring back a 50% progress report to them to confirm the general modifications and kind of the direction of the revisions that, you know, we were heading in. And we did this in July, this past July. It was generally well received by City Council, and they just requested a few minor changes and clarifications, and they directed staff and Revot to finalize the update. So, what is being presented tonight to the planning commission for review and comment is the actual 100% draft update. And after planning commission has had a chance to comment on it, and we will take comments and incorporate them as applicable into the final revisions and take them to the City Council for update. So, what was in your agenda packet was the extent of the proposed revisions. What I'll be presenting tonight is the highlights of the revision, so you can see exactly what was changed. So, as I mentioned, we are updating the table of contents. And so, this was to address amended chapters and to reference the Avenue Flag specific plan. So, this is the section that changed down here. And in the introduction, we inserted references to the Avenue Flag specific plan, to the art deco styles. We deleted references to the redevelopment project and the Bealton Redevelopment Agency. And again, throughout, just added references to the art deco design style. So, the agrarian section had some changes to it. So, the overall focus to the update in this section was to encourage a mix of exterior wall materials for visual interest. Consider alternate materials and contemporary expressions of this style to reduce the percentage of board and batten siding used in new projects and to encourage higher quality wood siding on new buildings. So, I'll just go through here and illustrate a few of the changes that happened. A whole new set of images were inserted. They were, they're images of more modern examples of agrarian buildings. We added a paragraph describing the intent of the agrarian style. The more updated images. And here, we actually inserted the Parkway Market we imagined as agrarian. We've taken this from the potential before and after illustrations that were previously in the design guidelines. This market happens to be in the specific plan, so we couldn't really use it as an example of a before and after for that particular market, but it was a really well-done example of a agrarian building, so we felt that it would be appropriate to use it here as an example. The building and accent material section was upgraded to refine the guidelines for exterior wall materials, specifically the bullet point referring to board and batten siding. So. I think I missed, I went past. So. We, we're encouraging a mix of exterior wall materials. And we made a more enhanced statement on board and batten siding, stating that it must be integrated into the design, composed of other wall materials as well, and that no more than 75% of a building's facade is to be board and batten. So, that was one of the main focus. And we had some council members that were concerned about the amount of board and batten that was being used in the agrarian style, and there was a discussion about that, and we felt that, you know, some more guidelines on how much board and batten could be used were appropriate, and really more reflect the current style emerging in Bealton. So, we were, we, we did that, and I, council felt that that was appropriate, at least when we took the 50% of progress report to them. So, again, new, new, new images. Yeah, and that was pretty much it for this section. And we added into the mission revival section, an example of, an additional example of mission revival style, and again, this was one of the examples that were previously in the illustrations of potential improvement section, before and afters. It happened to be the Bealton Post Office, which, it was such a nice job. They did such a nice job on it, and we thought that it was a really nice example of the mission revival, so we put it in here. And talking about this section, we, in essence, deleted this section. And we just explained that this had six before and after building examples, most of which are now located in the specific plan. We deleted the other examples of ranch and contemporary buildings in the specific plan. They just weren't appropriate to be in here any longer. As I mentioned, we moved the mission revival style of the post office to that section, and the agrarian example of Parkway Market to the agrarian section. And then, onto our new section, art deco. So, this is a brand-new style section with narrative and images, and it follows the same format as the other four allowed design styles. So, this, in essence, has become our fifth design style, but only applicable in the Avenue Flag specific plan. But the following general elements are addressed in this section. So, we started out by giving an overview of various art deco, art modern styles, and so, there's a classical art deco, art modern streamlined, a diner, roadside architecture. We just gave a little bit of a background and kind of to give a feel for what that style is all about. And then went on to address building forms, reforms, material, and such, such as was done with the other design styles. So, wherever there is missing information that didn't cover the art deco and art modern, or, or perhaps elements of design that were in the specific plan, we referenced that additional material is to be considered in the specific plan, and where there are gaps in here, the specific plan shall be. So, this is all new examples that we were put in. So, art deco buildings, art modern buildings, art modern again. And if there are any questions on the art deco section or any comments, I'd be to answer some of those. And there was also, Chair Hamel, thank you for your suggestion of having some examples. And we went through describing the lighting, actually, let's back up a little bit, we went through describing the lighting, street lighting in terms of what that should be. Then shows tree grates and precast concrete. We have some standards in here, but no examples, so. In addition to the examples here that are from what's been installed in median two, we included some examples of the street furnishings, and we're really actually following the standards that were established for street furnishings in the Avenue Flag specific plan here. So, and, you know, it's appropriate, we can include that as part of the design guidelines, just to round everything out. Now, with that, that is stated in the staff report that this is an information item, and we're seeking comments from the planning commission on the proposed revisions, the community design guidelines, and your comments will be incorporated as applicable into the final updates being presented to the City Council. And your adoption by the City Council, we will republish the design guidelines, which currently, this is my, my dog-eared version, but this is what it looks like. And so, we're going to just take these revised pages that I've just gone through and that were in your packet, and we'll insert them into the booklet and republish it, and it'll be a new update dated 2022. The last update was 2005, so it was about time for us to update it. So, that concludes my presentation. And then the recommendation is that the planning commission review and comment on the proposed revisions to the 2005 community guidelines, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Irma, and thank you for all your work on this. I'm just gonna go down the line and for additional comments, questions for you, so we'll start with Commissioner Ligon.
Commissioner Ligon, you're on Zoom. I mean, you're on, I did that last time.
I'm on Zoom. Thank you, Irma. That was very thorough, particularly the new section on art deco. I mean, you really spelled it out what is expected, which I think is necessary, especially when we have such a driven vision of this, of the avenue. So, I like that approach. I don't have anything. Nothing really to offer or to add. One question, I know you, you pointed out some, some changes to the agrarian design.
Yes.
Essentially, all I got was that we're limited Essentially, all I got was that we're limiting the amount of board and batten to 75%. Is that about just a bit, along with encouraging other material? That's the only restrictive?
Yes.
Kind of formula there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, good, I agree with it. No more comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blockdike, do you have anything to add?
You're on Zoom.
Did that last meeting?
Hello, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Hey, I don't have anything else to add. If I was, I'd be echoing Commissioner Liggett's statements. And I do agree that, that the staff and Irma, and you guys have all done a great job on this, and I like what you've proposed. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Andrea, can you put us on the screen where it shows all of us on Zoom?
Sure, let's see.
I might have just switched my camera, I want to make sure.
Oh yeah, so Irma, if you could just stop sharing, I think that might be the best.
Okay. Um.
Because I'm not, I'm not seeing other people, so it's hard for me to.
Okay. I don't know if that did anything.
Nice lightning picture.
Okay, that looked good.
Oh, wait a minute.
Might be a beam back.
Two screens up, this is the problem.
Hey, there we go.
We're back.
Okay, that lightning picture is actually about Santa Barbara a few years ago when there was.
That's, that's a good picture. Let's see, Commissioner Sarkia, let's go to you.
Well, I really like the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. I really like the illustrations and on the content of your, that you're putting out here. Just a great job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Mercado.
Thank you Chair Hamel. Thank you Irma, this is a great presentation. I did have a couple of questions, because both when I was on the Planning Commission before, and when we looked at this again when I was on council, there was a lot of discussion on the neon signs on the art deco, and I know it says in limited amounts. And at one time, there was talk about saying you could only have five neon signs in the whole avenue. We're not limiting to just five signs, or you just the size of the building or whatever that amount that would be in question?
Yeah, we're, we don't have any sidelines, we're trying to, you know, be reasonable about it, because art deco does have some amount of neon, and so a little bit, we felt maybe okay, but not the Miami-style art deco.
There you go.
Neon lighting, yeah.
All right, I just, like I said, I just didn't know if we were gonna, but you can only have this many, or, because there was, like, there was a lot of discussion earlier on, and then the other question on the agrarian, trying to limit the board and batten. If, are you, is this just for commercial or on residential? So if you had a remodel, for instance, say the house was part stucco now, and then to do the remodeling, decided to go to board and bat, would that be part of the 75% limit, or could they make that change when they do a complete remodel? For residential?
That's a really good question. I think, so the intent of this was to have an overall higher quality materials.
Right.
And, and because the commercial buildings, you know, non-essential buildings are, there's, there's so much siding. So, I think we would encourage the residential buildings to comply as much as possible, but, you know, certainly if there's a remodel, I think it would depend on the extent of the remodel. I mean, if they're rebuilding the whole house, then we would take a look at that, but it's
Right.
It's a remodel, and we kind of look at substantial remodel or substantial renovations to see where it actually starts looking like a brand-new building.
Right, okay. So, I mean, we're not gonna put a definitive number on it, say, you know, or is that part of the design change that we need to just kind of put in? I'm just questioning, just, I mean, if somebody residential was saying, we're tearing down our house, it's board and batten house now, but we wanted to go stucco, and so when we do part of that remodeling, we're exchanging it for, for that, is that within realm?
I mean, they can certainly change up the, the style, so they wouldn't have to stay. With, I mean, I get your question, right, they can swap it out for a different design style.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I understand your correction?
Right, yeah, I just. Where the limitations were, that's what I was just trying to query.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I am last. I just have some little tiny things to add, and Irma, and I have already discussed two of them, but I'll just reiterate. First, again, awesome job on this Irma, and I actually like when you go through and some of those sketches and examples, I like that Parkway Market and the post-op example, post-office example, those are pretty cool. On the table of contents, I just thought we could maybe add, it's in the third column over where it's the new edition of the architectural character addendum art deco. Maybe we want to add a couple line items, you know, like signage, page 117, lighting, page 118, site, street furnishings, just to kind of include that in there, if there's room. I know it's kind of a funny document that you're working on.
The street, the street lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the, we had, so I showed some of the examples from the specific.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm starting with the table of contents page right at the very beginning.
Oh.
This is just a little, you know, it's just a picky little thing, picky little addition to add to the table of contents.
Okay, then could you repeat that again?
Yeah, so are you on that page, table of contents?
Yes.
Okay, so in the third column, where you're adding the architectural character addendum art deco, and then you have itemized building form, page 113, you know, so on, so forth. So you could add those last couple pages, like you could have signage, page 117, you know, just to complete it.
Okay.
And then lighting, page 118, site and street furnishings, 119.
I said, okay, yeah.
Just kind of to be consistent.
Yep, okay.
Okay, the other thing you and I talked about today, but it was, so it's on it's on page three of, I guess it's the introduction section, and in that first column, it discusses, the design guidelines reflect architectural influences from surrounding farms and ranches, and that's where we get our guidelines to go with a mix of agrarian, mission revival ranch, contemporary ranch styles. So it's kind of laying out, this is why the city has decided to do these. And then it just briefly mentions art deco, art modern style, and I thought we could just give another little sentence that says, you know, this we're adding this to give a nod to the era of the 20s through 40s and our history of being service town USA, and, you know, just like a one-liner.
Just kind of tie them all together, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's fully mentioned and detailed in the art deco section, but I thought, oh, if somebody's just perusing through the introduction, they should somebody might wonder, well, why did they decide to go with that style? Anyway, and then last but not least, like I said earlier, I was wondering if we could have examples of the, the lighting and the benches and the tree grates and stuff, and you provided that, so I'm assuming, can you just put that at the end, like on page 121 or something at the end of that?
Yeah, I just had pulled those out, up from the specific plan and included it in the presentation that I just did, but we'll find a room for it.
Okay.
And where we can put that in. Able to squeeze it in there.
Okay, great. And yeah, I, I really liked all of that, both for agrarian and art deco, all the new additions of the examples and sketches and all of that, it's very good. And that really concludes us.
Okay, great, I appreciate it so much. And if I may, I would just like to go back to clarification. Commissioner Mercado, I was trying to follow what you're asking to clarify on the board and batten and the percentage, and I was going back, I wanted to make sure that we understood that the new language is being put in there, it says that if board and batten is used, the siding must be high-quality and must be integrated into a design composed of other walls and materials, and no more than 50% of the building's facade could be board and batten. So, it's, if it is used.
Right.
It doesn't say that it has to be used, and there's other options there that are available. So if a renovation, a residential renovation were to occur, and if they were using board and batten siding, then if it's a substantial remodel, then, then this would kick in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you Irma.
Thank you.
So, and you already took us through the timeline, so, so you'll make some additions and present it back to City Council, correct?
Do that as soon as we can get on the agenda, fairly soon, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so that concludes that item. Written communications, none. Planning commissioner comments, anybody want to raise their hand? Anybody got anything?
We're good.
Commissioner Blockdike.
Yeah, I just found out this week I'm gonna be a grandfather. Yes, I know. This is no place here, but I'm pretty happy about that.
There you go, good.
Thank you, October. Yeah, a month ago, we were congratulating Erin for being a father, and now, now I get to be a grandfather for the first time.
Awesome. Very cool. Okay, let's see. Oh, I have just a quick, I always do my little public service announcements, reminder this Saturday. From nine to one is the household hazardous waste drop-off at the wastewater treatment plant from nine to one on Saturday, so just if you have any of that kind of stuff, get rid of it the, the appropriate way. That's all I have. So, planning director reports, Director Kiefer.
I really don't have much to report today. Not much, not much to offer today.
Okay, then with that, we will adjourn at 6:36.
Great. Thank you, good seeing you all. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.